Please rise. Before we begin tonight, just like to have a moment of silence for a couple people who have passed away recently. First one is Michael Turchinetz, who was a greeter for a couple years at City Hall. You might have known his familiar face as you came through the door. He was very, very helpful to residents as they came in to ask where to go for certain things. And Michael passed away. And also Jean Logan De Senzo, the mother-in-law of our mayor, gone on holiday. So if you could have a moment of silence for those people, please. Thank you.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Should be plugged to the roll call for the City Council meeting on March 29, 2016.
Councillor Agaman.
Here.
Councillor Junta.
Present.
Councillor Tontar.
Here.
Councillor Vogel.
Present.
Councillor Zied.
Present.
Councillor Cameron.
Here.
Councillor Connell.
Here.
Councillor Cronin.
Present.
Councillor Devlin.
Here.
Councillor Earls.
Present.
Councillor President O'Brien.
Here.
Late file items?
The mayor's update, as always, is a late file item. There's also a first sheet of the minutes with corrected names that's on your, that councillor's desk. Other than that, we have no late files.
Motion to waive the rules and accept the late files.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the City Council. I will be very brief later on. My name is Kevin Hunt. I'm the Veterans Officer for the City of Newburyport. Later on, a joint resolution will be offered to you by Councillor Junta and also by Councillor Cronin. In that order is the possibility that you may approve an exemption to excise tax for members of the armed services who are outside of the Commonwealth on active duty. I am here to say that I strongly support that measure. I am happy that these gentlemen are offering this for consideration. This is a new item from the state. And basically, I'm going to pass out to you, which is in writing what I just said to you. And that is all I have to say. I am available. This will go to committee, obviously. I will be available to the committee at any time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman and members of the council, I am up for appointment for the Commission for Diversity and Tolerance. I bring to that commission over 35 years of advocacy for people with disabilities and other people. So I feel that I could bring some knowledge or a wealth of knowledge to that commission. And I respectfully request your confirmation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Thank you for coming. Thomas Getz?
Mr. Chairman, council members, I'm Thomas Getz. I live at 36 Broad Street, and I'm a retired teacher for Marblehead. And I'm up to the mayor's recommendation for membership of the Commission for Diversity and Tolerance. Having retired, I now substitute teach in 10 different schools around the area. And one of the schools I substituted is Pike School in Andover. And the minority population of the Pike School is about 38 percent. So I was there a few weeks ago in a fourth grade class, and my son studied Arabic when he was in college. And so, as I introduced myself, I asked the class, "Does anybody here speak Arabic?" Two kids raised their hand. And one of them went up to the board, and they started recommending phrases that he could write in Arabic. And he writes them out in Arabic. And it was perfectly normal. Everyone in that class said, "Well, this makes sense. This is what we should be doing." So my focus on this commission, I think because of the lack of diversity in Newburyport, my goal is to focus on the school system and try to get more diversity through education and contact in that variety. I was at the production for the high school, Ms. Williams and Ms. Seleski. And in the conversation afterwards, there are some musicals that they don't present because of lack of diversity in the potential cast. And so they're trying to work something out with Lawrence so they can do some sort of a joint program in that respect. Pike School also has a Director of Community Life, and his job is to coordinate within the school system their diversity and how it affects their lives. And I've talked to him many times as I sub there, and he wants to get involved with us as well as another way to somehow increase the diversity in our school system. So I want to be proactive as opposed to reactive to issues and see if we can't move forward in diversity and then naturally follows tolerance for that diversity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Chairman and councillors. I'm Sheila Treef. I'm at 11 Chandel Drive in your district. I actually do know how to dress up, but I've just come from an African dance class, which either makes it easy for me to be a candidate for the Diversity Commission, or I'm mad. So I would like to say that I am a candidate for the Commission on Diversity. I am most interested in continuing to support the efforts in Newburyport to help people understand the important task of recognizing differences and bringing us together a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Three individuals in back. Come introduce yourself.
Thank you, Chair and members of the council.
Could you give your names, please?
I'm Emma.
I'm Ursula Siegfried.
And I'm Bea Jordan. So we're eighth graders from River Valley Charter School, and this year in Humanities, we studied a unit called Race in America, which included a sentence on the Civil War and famous abolitionists.
Our Humanities teacher mentioned the idea of renaming the I-95 southbound bridge, which was first proposed by John McCon and Bill Plant from the Newburyport Daily News. And we were intrigued by the idea.
We followed through by writing a letter to government officials explaining the reasons behind the idea. As we stated in the resolution, William Lloyd Garrison was a renowned abolitionist, nonviolent, and a native of Newburyport.
Garrison founded an anti-slavery newspaper called The Liberator, where he met John Greenlee Foodyer. They became acquaintances and worked together for some time.
The John Greenlee Foodyer Bridge and the William Lloyd Garrison Bridge would stand side by side, educating those passing through.
We hope you will support our resolution by naming the William Lloyd Garrison Bridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming, and great job. That's it for public comment. We'll move on to the mayors.
Good evening, Council President O'Brien, members of the City Council. It's my pleasure to be in front of you again to give a brief update. First and foremost, I would like to thank you very much for the historic vote that you took just over two weeks ago. We had worked for decades to try and fund a garage in the City of Newburyport, and I am very grateful for all of your efforts and the time and diligence you put in to reviewing documents and making this important vote happen for our city. I would also like to recognize Andy Port, Ethan Manning, and my former Chief Administrative Officer, Heather Rowe, for their response and pulling together all the documents and responding to numerous questions that was requested by you. I have received correspondence from three City Councilors in response to your resolution that was passed also at that time to begin pulling together an advisory group. So I would encourage all of you who might have suggestions. There's a lot of duplication in those I've received so far. But please, if you have specific recommendations for me, I would ask that you submit them according to the timeline of the resolution, which is this Friday, April 1st. Thank you. Finance. Per the city charter, you are to receive an updated five-year capital plan, which you have all received. And I look forward to reviewing that document with you as it's sent to committee. I just wanted to remind you that these are priorities that are submitted to my office and our finance team that are based on their priorities. And we continue to work with the departments as they present their priorities and manage all of those priorities and then put together for you a, you have also tonight before you the FY '16 request for capital expenditures. It's, I think it's also important to note that in the capital plan, the CIP, you will see that there are more and more capital needs that the city is picking up on behalf of the schools. One of those you've already funded is for security this year. But it's also important to recognize that the CIP is a very fluid document and that it's put together a little bit, it's a little stronger than I say a wish list because it is really based on need and priority. But there are so many factors that change. There could be breakdown of equipment. There could be emergency. A grant program materializes for a particular item or project, and then priorities can be reordered. So just, I'd like you to keep that in mind. I know there were some discussion about some of the notations in the capital plan last year and again. This isn't something that is 100 percent absolute, but as I said, is a fluid document. As I said, you also have the CIP requests for FY '16. Again, these are based on our highest priorities. Last year, we had a difficult time because we had such a dramatic deficit in snow and ice, and we weren't able to fund as many projects as we had hoped. And so we have together worked over the past six years to really begin addressing significant capital needs in the city, including equipment, vehicles, buildings. And we still have a tremendous amount of work ahead of us. But I think we've been, you know, moving forward in the right direction, and I look forward to reviewing, working with you on those requests. FY '17 budget. This is going to be a difficult budget year. There's no question about it. I'm hearing that from many of my other colleagues also. We started with, after all, in our budget review, $160,000 gap. We've been able to narrow that down to about 60, and we'll continue to work because, as you know, I will not submit anything but a balanced budget to you. The one number that we're waiting on right now is our health insurance increase, and that could be a real budget buster. So we're all kind of holding our breath on that one and anticipate that in the next couple of weeks. The school district's team is continuing to work on their budget. They did present to the school committee a preliminary budget at their last meeting. And as you know from our joint meeting back in November, they're working on a 3.1 percent increase, which is leaving the schools, if you've read the Daily News article yesterday, is leaving the schools with a $216,000 gap. And again, they will continue to work on closing their gap as we are on the city side. I think it's also important to note that over the past seven years, we have been able to, with this 3.1 increase, we're now approaching a 28 percent increase in the operational budget for the schools and picking up more and more of the capital needs. And all of the teacher benefits are not part of the operating budget, and our budget is now approaching $29 million for the schools for this year. One of the major issues that I think is making it difficult for us to put back some of the programs that I think we all would like to do is the personnel costs. And that's, you know, like the city side, that is the majority of the budget. But I think one of the things that a lot of the public doesn't recognize is that in the teachers' contracts is a section called steps and columns. And as teachers get a different additional credits, a different length of service, and receive additional degrees, they move in steps and columns. That is over and above the cost of living raises that are in the contract. So if you take a look at the last several years, the contracts for teachers in the last six years total a 10 percent increase, which is wonderful. We had really worked hard to try and get our teacher salaries up so we would stop losing qualified staff. And in that regard, we are now in the top 12 percent in terms of what we pay our teachers across the Commonwealth, which is wonderful. But these steps and columns raises equate to an additional 1.8 to 4 percent increases every year. And that's why you're continuing to hear this, you know, "How are we going to finally move the schools forward when we are putting so much of our efforts into personnel costs?" There have been several rallies at the state level regarding charter school funding, lifting the charter cap, and Chapter 70 funding. I don't have a sense yet if whether or not the House will be putting more money into Chapter 70. We certainly advocated at our last mayor's meeting with Speaker DeLeo to do so. There is some discussion about raising it from $20 per student to $100. That would be a tremendous help and would certainly help cover that gap that the schools have right now. The superintendent is doing what she did last year in terms of organizing by priority levels in terms of their needs, because it's very rare that we don't end up adding more money to the school budget at some point after we set the budget. And so we continue to do that as more money becomes available for Chapter 70 or some kind of surplus. That money is directed towards the schools, and we will continue to work on, working with the schools on the increases they need. Terms of personnel, interviews are scheduled this week for the candidates that have been selected for the interview for Building Commissioner. And I'm hoping that we will make a decision by the end of the week, and we'll let you know as soon as possible. This Friday, April 1st, is Gary Calderwood's last day as the city's Building Commissioner. Gary has been only the second Building Commissioner in our city, and he has served our city for the past 30 years. So on behalf of the city, I would like to thank Gary for his dedication and wish him the very best in his retirement. The Chief Administrator Officer, we had final interviews last week for those candidates, and I'm hoping to be making a decision this week on who will be the next Chief Administrative Officer. I'm happy to report that the Kelly School approved the, the planning board approved the Kelly School project on March 23rd, and structural engineers are on site this week. Water and sewer rates. Apparently, there was some confusion at the last Water and Sewer Commission meeting regarding the setting of water and sewer rates. My understanding is that there is not going to be any increases this year. One of the charts that was presented to the Water and Sewer Commissioner, Commission was if, in fact, we did not get the $2 million in the Mass Works grant, that we would have had to have an $82 increase to be able to cover the costs of that project. But that is not the case. So there is no anticipated increase. I also gave you a list of the PC projects. I wasn't sure if you had received that yet, and those reviews started last week also. And the full proposals are on file in the planning office, and you would like to see those in more detail. And then, as you noticed when you came into the chamber tonight, there was an amazing display of eighth grade projects in the hallway from Ms. Lee and Ms. Groussen's class. They did an incredible civil rights project, I think not unlike our charter school students. And we'd like to commend the students for doing an amazing job and encourage all to come and take a look at these wonderful projects. Questions? Comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to consent agenda?
The consent agenda consists this evening of the approval of the minutes for March 14th with the addition of that new page one that's on your desk. There are five transfers. Transfer number five is free cash, $150,000 to stabilization trust funds, same amount. These are all to be referred to Budget and Finance. Secondly, transfer number six, free cash, same amount, $150,000 to compensated absences, same amount, $150,000. Transfer number seven is multiple capital projects, $987,721. Transfer number eight, budget contingency, $68,214, to salary accounts, same amount. And lastly, transfer number nine, reserve appropriation, $1,020 to other supplies, same amount. There are six communications. First communication, communication number 32, Councillor Cronin's Garage Impact of Butters Group recommendations to go to Neighborhood and City Services. Likewise, Councillor Zied's Garage Impact of Butters Group recommendations going to the same committee. Communication number 34 is the CIP submission for FY 2016. The complete scan went out with the packet, and we also have a complete book in the councillor's, excuse me, clerk's office. That's to go to Budget and Finance. Communication number 35, Snow Budget Deficit Letter, again, Budget and Finance. Communication number 36 is the Port Tavern Outdoor Seating Application, to be referred to License and Permit. Communication number 37, Tour de Cure Ride to occur on May 22nd, 2016, to be referred to Public Safety. First reading to the following appointments. Judy La Croix, 14 Hill Street, to Committee on Diversity and Tolerance until May 31st, 2019. Margaret McQuillan, 438 Merrimack Street, same commission until April 1st, 2019. Thomas Getz, 36 Broad Street, again, CDT, until April 1st, 2019. Following our reappointments, Francis Reslowick, 12 Chase Street, to the Council on Aging until May 31st, 2021. And Sheila Tenter, 10 Dexter Street, to the Tree Commission until April 1st, 2019. And that is the consent agenda this evening.
Councillor Connell?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to remove transfer number seven out of the consent
Anything else? What is the wish of the council then?
Motion to approve as amended. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. We'll move on. Talk about transfer.
Transfer number seven again is multiple capital projects, $987,721.
Councillor Connell?
Yes, Mr. President, I move that.
Is there a motion to?
Excuse me.
Make the motion first?
Yes.
Who made the motion?
My motion is to remove.
It's been removed.
It's been removed, so now you need a motion to approve to?
A motion to approve, excuse me.
Which we can't, we can't vote on tonight, on to a charter.
Let me ask for some assistance from the chair. I would like to see this matter considered both by the Committee on Budget and Finance and Committee of the Hall so that the full council can participate.
Just change that during the, should have changed that just during the, when the city clerk was bringing it up, just say, you wanted, instead of bringing it up, just say, change it to Council of the Hall, and that would have ended it.
Is it out of order to do it now?
It's up to the city clerk.
Motion to refer to both to be in order.
That's all. Here's a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Move on to communication, late filed in the mail.
Motion receiving filed. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. We want the second readings.
Second readings. First, Matthew W. Simons, 62 Monroe Street, Hable, as the Newburyport Police Lieutenant. Second, Sheila Treef, 11 Chandel Drive, CDT, until March 1st, 2019. And Cheryl Amy, 24 Milk Street, to the Newburyport Housing Authority, until March 31st, 2021.
Before we vote, I'd like just to have the marshal introduce the candidate to us. Could have misassignments, just so everyone will know who he is.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, City Council. My name is Matt Simons. I've been with the police department for 15 years. Came on as a patrolman into the detective's office, eventually promoted to sergeant and now to lieutenant. Very appreciative of the mayor and the marshal placing their trust in me. It's a position I don't take lightly. I know some of you better than others. Anybody knows me knows that I'm a very community-oriented officer. I look forward to, you know, really establishing a community partnership between the police department and this great community that we live in.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Now we'll take a vote, a motion?
Motion approved collectively.
Second.
Roll call.
Just approve all three appointments collectively. Councillor Agaman.
Yes.
Councillor Junta.
Yes.
Councillor Tontar.
Yes.
Councillor Vogel.
Yes.
Councillor Zied.
Yes.
Councillor Cameron.
Yes.
Councillor Connell.
Yes.
Councillor Cronin.
Yes.
Councillor Devlin.
Yes.
Councillor Earls.
Yes.
Councillor President O'Brien.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Move on to orders.
Order, this order is tabled. It's order number 17, submitted last meeting. It's the resolution relating to the naming in the southbound span of the newly completed I-95 bridge.
Motion to approve from the table, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Need a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Councillor Zied?
So I'd just like to, again, stand up and talk a little bit about this, mostly just to thank the students, Emma, Ursula, and Bea, who worked with me and really wrote the resolution that you have in front of you. I think they deserve a good round of applause for everything they've done. And, I mean, I think the resolution's fairly straightforward. But just to be clear, the old bridge was one thing, and the new bridge will be two spans. So the other span that heads northbound will continue to be named after Foodyer. And this was just an interesting opportunity that arose because of how they're building it. I think it's a great idea, and I hope you guys will support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Motion to approve, order number 17. Councillor Agaman.
Yes.
Councillor Junta.
Yes.
Councillor Tontar.
Yes.
Councillor Vogel.
Yes.
Councillor Zied.
Yes.
Councillor Cameron.
Yes.
Councillor Connell.
Yes.
Councillor Cronin.
Yes.
Councillor Devlin.
Yes.
Councillor Earls.
Yes.
Councillor President O'Brien.
Yes.
If I might add, Mr. President, I might add, Mr. President, I have heard from this Representative Kelkhorst that this probably would require some action at the legislative level. So I will make a certified copy of this, get the necessary signatures, and forward it to him.
Thank you.
He may need ultimately a home role petition book or.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great job, young ladies. Thank you for coming. Order number 19.
Order number 19 is submitted jointly by Councillor Junta and Cronin. It is the acceptance of Chapter 60A, Section 1, specifically Paragraph 8, that, as Mr. Hunt had said, would waive excise taxes for those deployed or stationed outside the territorial boundaries of the Commonwealth for a period of at least 45 days in the calendar year of the exemption. It goes on to say.
Motion to refer to Budget and Finance.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Order 20.
Order 20 is a resolution jointly submitted by Councillors Cameron, Earls, and Devlin with respect to the Massachusetts Foundation Budget Review Commission, identified in its final report October 30th regarding two areas, employee health insurance and special education, where this foundation significantly understates the true cost of educating students in the Commonwealth, and it has not kept pace with the rising cost. It goes on to say a number of different things. The City Council calls on the mass legislature and the governor to fund and adopt the 2015 Foundation Budget Review Commission's recommendations in order to provide relief and support to local communities and property taxpayers.
Motion to refer to joint education.
Second.
Councillor Vogel?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just had a question. As this goes on to committee, it seems to me that there would be a little bit more, there would be some power in having all of our signatures and names appear on this. Wouldn't that be appropriate to discuss in committee?
Sure. Thanks, Mr. President. Just to be brief, it's pretty self-explanatory, and there's some context on the second page. And the reason why we're sponsoring this is the mayor mentioned, on the city side, we're trying to do a 3.1 percent increase for the school budget. The governor's budget in Chapter 70 was a 1.6 increase. We're hoping in either or both the House and Senate that that amount would be more. This just adds our voice to many other communities. To be honest with you, this is totally stolen from Amesbury. They adopted this a couple of weeks ago on both their city council and their school committee. I think it's about 30 different communities are adopting this, and this is part of the reform of Chapter 70. Our next meeting is, I want to say, April 14th or 11th, maybe. So the House budget's going to come out in mid-April, so it's going to be a little late for that. But we should all be contacting State Representative Kelkhorst when Senate arrives, as I'm sure many of us have already, just to keep the pressure. So hopefully, either the House or Senate will have a bigger Chapter 70 number when it gets to conference committee. Hopefully, the larger number would come out, and hopefully, the governor wouldn't veto it. But it's just, you know, the municipalities are taking on so much of this over the years and statements that they're doing its share.
Counselor Connell?
Yes. Mr. President, I'm wondering if it might be appropriate for us, given the time constraints that Counsel Cameron referred to, to suspend the rule, which is unusual, for this particular purpose, to get this into the state legislature, suspend the rules, take two readings tonight, and then move it along so the legislature can have the value of our opinion before them when they act. Is that possible? I guess is the first question.
Just take a motion to declare an emergency, being emergency preamble. It's an order, so it's one reading.
Then--
We got a reading tonight.
When's your next meeting, Counselor?
Fourteenth.
So I'd like to put that in the form of an order, allowing the clerk to wordsmith the emergency preamble, allowing to suspend the rule so as to take this matter up in two readings tonight.
Second.
Second. I'm flattered that you need me to, I'm, you know, really, the emergency would be such that the timetable on Beacon Hill deems it necessary.
Yes.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Foes?
Motion approved.
Second.
Don't we have to do a roll call?
Actually, I don't think we have to end of the charter. You would think--
Okay. Just a quick point of order.
Suspension of rules, I don't think so.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Can we add all of our, can this go out with all of our names on it?
Sure. Okay.
Is this still going to go to joint ed, or are we going to back away from that?
No.
Because we had a motion and a second, do we have to remove those?
There'll have to be--
Yeah.
Removed, drawn, or drawn motion?
I remove my second.
All in favor?
Aye.
See, now we can go on to the resolution.
So there's a motion approved on the floor, I believe?
Yes. Wasn't the second yet.
And who was the second?
The second, yeah.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
I think it's probably good policy to do a roll call.
Oh, you're saying the roll call for this one? Are there any further discussion? Roll caller.
This is a point of our side, there's a roll call on the final motion to approve.
Resolution.
We did a voice vote on emergency preamble, this is a roll call vote on the motion to approve. Counselor Agaman?
Yes.
Counselor Junta?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Earl's?
Yes.
Counselor President O'Brien?
Yes.
Good job. Twenty-one.
Order number twenty-one is a packing order that was submitted by Counselor Cronin that at Merrimack Street and Boardman Street, by extending the distance of the restriction on Merrimack Street for a distance of thirty-nine feet west to Boardman Street and the existing crosswalk, remain in this expanded area which provides a clearer sight--
Motion to refer to Public Safety?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Foes? Order twenty-two.
Order twenty-two, the following licensed contractor application for two thousand sixteen, a water sewer drain layer roadway and sidewalk, white mountain cable construction, Epsom, New Hampshire, submitted Counselor Agaman.
Epsom.
Motion to table.
Motion to what?
Motion to place on the table.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Foes? Table. We want to ordinances? There are none? Three items? Budget and Finance?
Budget and Finance, motion to remove transfer number four, DPS gas to DPS fuel and oil.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Foes?
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion?
Counselor-- President, this is, this is standard operating procedure. There is a reserve fund. When city vehicles fuel up, their departments are charged, it's put into the reserve fund. And then when they need to buy gas and oil, it's taken from the reserve fund, and this is the method for doing that.
Any further discussion? How was voting committee?
It was unanimous.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Foes? Next.
Motion to remove communication twenty-six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Foes? Good.
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Foes?
Motion to remove ordinance six.
Second.
Sheet metal permits.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Foes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Counselor?
In two thousand eleven, the state legislature passed legislation requiring the communities in Massachusetts to inspect sheet metal work. And my understanding is communities have been slow in adopting this. A lot of other communities have charges, fees for permitting and for inspections. Newburyport has not had it up to this point. Roughly, we are comparable, and I'm going to defer to Counselor Junta, who is very much more familiar than I am, sheet metal work. Oh, excuse me, it was three-zero, unanimous and committed.
Thank you. Counselor Junta?
So this is a good one for me to talk to, since I do have a journeyman sheet metal license. Don't get to use too often, but I do sell a lot of sheet metal. So I had, I had the ability to give a little bit of input on this when it was, you know, when it was being worked on. This really makes a very simple process for the mechanical contractor. The permit is per system, so if somebody has one system in their house, or, you know, times two, three, four, so the bigger the house, the more expensive the permit would be, and so forth. So this is a very clean, efficient way to pull a permit. It is, it has been an interesting last five years as somebody who's had a sheet metal license. Many towns haven't had this set up, so you'd go to a town hall and you'd ask them to pull a permit, and they would say, well, we don't even have a permit. So we're just catching up with the state right now in Newburyport, where the mechanical contractors can come, pull a permit, get an inspection on their work. And again, I feel like our rates and fees here are very, are very fair to the contractor and to the homeowner, who will indirectly pay them.
Counselor Connell?
Thank you. I'm raising in support of this. I usually stand here against fee increases that trickle down to residents. But as I had said to my colleagues in committee, that there are times, and I was a victim of one of them, where there's some sheet metal that goes nowhere, and it wasn't required to be inspected, and this is, you know, long, thirty years ago, when, when the structure was built. But this actually does protect the homeowner in the long run, and it's a short amount of money to do so. So, again, it's not nickel and diming, I think it's really an insurance policy for the--
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call?
That's it, Mr. President.
This is motion approved to an ordinance. Counselor Agaman?
Yes.
Counselor Junta?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Earl's?
Yes.
Counselor President O'Brien?
First reading.
Anything else? Okay. Strength Ed?
Nothing to report.
License and permits?
Motion to remove communication twenty-eight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Foes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Counselor Vogel?
Thank you, Mr. President. Simply put, this is a renewal, all paperwork is in order, and it was voted out of committee unanimously in favor.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Foes? Anything else?
No, not tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Neighborhood and City Services?
Nothing tonight.
Planning and Development?
Mr. President, just, nothing to come out of committee, but we do have a joint hearing scheduled with the Planning Board on Wednesday, May fourth. I'll make sure you all get the official notification, and that's going to be posted in the newspaper. At that meeting, we're going to be discussing two of the ordinances which are in committee. One's pertaining to the Smart Growth District and pedestrian access around the Route One traffic circle, and the other is a zoning amendment, zoning map near the Bartlett Mall. So we'll be having those on May fourth. Thank you.
Public Safety?
Yes, Mr. President. Motion to remove communication twenty-two, petitioned by merchants for surveillance.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Foes? Good.
Motion to receive and file. Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. President, this is a petition brought forth by numerous downtown business owners and residents, asking for increased camera-type surveillance in the downtown area. There's really nothing that the city council can act on that's in front of us, so I would ask the city clerk that this be forwarded to Marshal Murray for his action, and perhaps to keep the council apprised of his actions.
Thank you.
I have a question, that the, when the merchants brought that petition forward, they were led to believe, not by me, that there was an ordinance that limited the number of cameras downtown. I wonder if any of the counselors have been on the, on the council longer could enlighten, enlighten me. Thank you.
Counselor Cameron?
Thank you. I want to say about two thousand ten, we did pass an order that required the council to sign off if there were any additional cameras at that time, and several of us were there. I believe the police installed three cameras. I think one might have been on In Street.
Two.
And I don't know if those three are still in operation, but, but the thought, I mean, several people were, you know, we did hear from constituents on both sides of that, and a lot of them were concerned that we were all of a sudden going to have an explosion of cameras all over the place, and the order was merely to make sure that the police touched base with the council, as they do on, you know, a lot of public safety matters, you know, course, racecourses and things like that, so that, that's what that was. So, you know, I can communicate that to the marshal, and if they are interested in police surveillance cameras, then they would need to bring that back to us.
Counselor Agaman?
Well, I think what I'm, what I'm going to do then is, I didn't realize that order existed. I'll get a copy from the clerk, and I'm, I'll propose another order, get it into the record, so we have something to push against, and then I'll contact the marshal. But this issue is something important to my ward and Ward Two, so I'd like to bring forward an order.
This one is to approve, right? Receiving file. All in favor?
Aye.
Foes? Good. Anything else?
Yes, removal of communication twenty-three, Heinz Race.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Foes? Go ahead.
Motion to approve. Second.
Second. Counselor Point?
This is reoccurring Lieutenant Heinz, first Lieutenant Derek Heinz, soldier's assistance fund race, same course as always. The only caveat is that the, the race organizers wait until closer to the date itself before they get the insurance. They've done this in the past. They're always been in full compliance, and this is probably the most well-run and well-attended event as a community event in town, and I'd urge approval. It was three-nothing in committee.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Foes? Next.
Communication number twenty-nine, move to remove.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Foes? Go ahead.
Motion approved. Second.
Discussion? Counselor Connell?
This is another reoccurring event that barely touches Newburyport. It's called the Ride End Alzheimer's. It's a hundred-mile bicycle event. There's slightly under two-point-five miles of the hundred miles that are in Newburyport, mostly in the industrial park, down Parker Street, up Pond Street to One A, and off into Newbury. It's, it's very minimal and stretched out at the point it gets into Newburyport at the approximately fifty-five mile mark, so they have insurance, and we've had no problems in the past.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Foes? Next.
Motion to move order number fifteen, bus stop.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Foes? Go ahead.
Motion approved. Second.
Discussion? Counselor Zee?
So this is a relatively new bus stop that the MBRCA has added to their route. It stops on Water Street, essentially right across the street from the James Stream, James Steen Mill, excuse me. I received a couple of messages from folks there that are enjoying that stuff and are actually using it to go anywhere the route goes, but in a lot of cases, to go to the train station and take the train down to Boston. So what this order allows us to do is officially designate it as a bus stop, and that will allow for the, a sign to be put up indicating that it is a bus stop. allow for the, a sign to be put up indicating that it is a bus stop. One constituent concern was that folks were stopping, vehicles were stopping, thinking that those folks wanted to cross the street when in fact they're just waiting for the bus. So this will just help formalize it, allow us to put up the sign and hopefully maybe repaint the crosswalk and make some other improvements, so I'd ask for your support on it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both. Anything else?
Nothing further.
Thank you. Public Utilities?
Yes, Mr. President. So we met jointly with the Water and Sewer Commission a week ago, eight days ago actually. We had five items that we covered together, so I'll just give a brief update. We find it's a very efficient way for us to get up to speed, cut out the middle man and just have a direct conversation. So we covered first odor treatment. There was a presentation by the third-party engineer, Bob Rafferty. He produced a PowerPoint which we can share with others if you want it, but the summary is he's done a lot of design refinements to figure out exactly what needs to be done. So far, he does not have a revised cost estimate, so we can hold constant in our minds what we had. There are going to be two contracts let out. There'll probably be one that'll just deal with the chemical aspect of it and then a later one, all this calendar year by the way, for the major construction like putting lids on the clarifier units. But in all, and I don't know if the other councillors would agree, but the presentation was very good by this engineer and I have a high degree of confidence in him and I think the Water and Sewer Commission does too. The next thing we covered was the Graff Road lift station, which you've heard about many times and the paper is, was accurate as far as I'm concerned from what I heard. We're in a land acquisition phase. We have to acquire about 5,000 square feet and an appraisal's been done and that process will play out on the normal course. We asked what we should expect to see in the capital improvement plan. You've now all been given copies as well, but just to highlight a couple items, and one was reported in the paper and that's about $2.25 million for the Hale Street sewer force main. Is a little misleading in the newspaper article about why the need for that. Basically, the existing force main, some of you may recall, is defective. It's out of round, so it will fail. And when it does fail, as Jamie Tucolo of the department put it, he won't be able to stop it. So it needs to be replaced. Then it was, the current one was installed in the late 70s, we think. The new one, we're hoping will have a real 50-year lifespan. The other one was a little bit less. Construction period will be about 26 weeks and it's going to run all the way from Hale Street to Pond Street. It's a very long, very long pipe. Fourth item we covered would be rates. You heard from the mayor. We did not have the finance person there, so really staff was just guessing at the $82 and misremembered, but you heard the answer from the mayor that currently there is no expectation of increasing rates. We'll go back from that, of course. Finally, we wanted an update on the water and sewer in Plum Island. The good news is with the mild winter, let's hope we're done with snow, there are only four freeze-ups, meaning four different valves that froze just once each. All of them have been insulated and you'll see in the capital improvement plan, Jamie is looking to do an alarm system for all of them. I have to say, going back to the odor treatment, there is absolutely an interaction with Plum Island and part of what Bob Rafferty and staff are figuring out is how to deal and meter that flow that comes from Plum Island which causes a smell and they had some clever ideas on that at low cost. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councillor Junta?
Permission to ask the chair a question? When the discussion on Hale Street, the main came up, was there any discussion in regards to improvements made on--
No, there was not. We did, I think we asked about that. We did. Yeah, and the work that they're going to be doing, if I remember, and I'll be corrected by my colleagues, they're doing it on a side that's the opposite of where a sidewalk might go. So what they're doing, as I understand it, would not prevent a future sidewalk. We wouldn't be wasting money, but there's nothing in the budget for a sidewalk there or any other improvements to the roadway for vehicles or pedestrians. Do I have that right?
Retried.
And I'm sorry, one thing I left out and we, the West End Sewer, that is a project that's going to be significant cost. It's in the capital improvement plan. Essentially, they don't have good access to it, so they need to build a new access road and clean up the easements. There's clouds on those easements. Sometimes they have an easement, sometimes they don't. Apparently, they've been in negotiation with the abutting owners and we have, we asked for copies of the drawings, which we can provide for all the councillors and we've given ones to the Ward Councillor for Ward 5.
But it's in Ward 6. And the first I knew about it was 10 minutes ago. Thank you, Councillor Junta.
By way of, by way of three of us.
Absolutely. Can I just, thank you. Just one more point. I mean, and Councillor Vogel knows this as well as anyone, if you talk to anybody from the West End, the conversation of Hale Street always comes up. Can we widen the street? Can we put a bike path in? Can we put a sidewalk in? We've been hearing it for 20 years. If we decide to open up Hale Street to fix the main, we better be prepared to talk about what's next, because that will be the, that will be the anticipated conversation from the residents. If you're going to open the road, what are you doing next? So I just wanted to express that.
Including repaving it.
Yeah.
It's dangerous. Any further? Anything further? Thank you very much for the report. Good of the order. Councillor Vogel?
Thank you, Mr. President. A little impromptu, was it last Thursday evening? We, I attended the, with a number of other councillors, the Economic Development Committee meeting or the economic development process going on along with the zoning changes. It was fascinating and I would encourage, if you missed the meeting or if you missed the notice of the meeting, I would encourage those of you that didn't attend that one to look for the announcements on the future. A lot of really good information coming our way about the master plan towards economic development. I thought it was hugely beneficial. I went there thinking, oh, well, I'm just going to this meeting and I came out of there, you know, sort of pumped up about what we're doing with the city and the views that are coming out of the planning office and so on and so forth with regard to economic development. So I'd encourage you to look for future meetings along that regard.
Thank you. Anything else? Take a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both. Motion adjourned. Thank you.